I'll order the meeting to Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, November the ninth. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Ranjit Singh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. All the city council members and all the city's citizens. And so my name is Pramansh. I'm a university resident and I go to Wyoming Community High School. And I'll be introducing you to the Sikh religion, a little bit about what the Sikh religion is. And I'll be challenging the prayers that Genghis has preached. So Sikhism is a monetary Sikh religion, which was started by Gurdangaji, the first of the ten physical Sikhs. We believe that the ten gurus are our religion's prophets or messengers sent by God or the Almighty, but they are the physical embodiment of God's honor. So Shri Gurdangaji and the other ten gurus, they went all around the world, including Europe, Africa, and parts of Asia, and they went all across the world and they spread the message of believing in one God, meditating upon his name, and staying away from superstitions, earning a honest living, and also helping the poor and needy. As time went on, it came time for the tenth guru and the last physical guru, Shri Gurdangaji, who created the Kalsapam. The Kalsapam translated to the pure way or the group of pure people. And it is a name given to the Bhaktai six who have sworn their life to selfless service, meditating the name of the Almighty and protecting the poor and weak. Shri Gurdangaji, he said, "So he said that my religion, it'll be different from all the other religions. It'll be unique." So if you see a Sikh anywhere, you will see, you can recognize it immediately from the five cases, cage, which means uncut hair, which is a sign of keeping the way God has treated us and keeping the same way God has sent us to the world and staying the same way. Sorry. Gangga, which is a comb, which is supposed to stay in our head, which is a sign of keeping nature clean and keeping our mother nature and the earth clean. Karana, which is an iron bangle, which is worn around the wrist, which is a sign of being in the will of God. Gifon, which is a knife or dagger that we wear at all times to protect others and protect ourselves. And Ghoshana, which is the underground we wear to save lost. So Shri Gurdangaji, the last physical guru, he gave the guru ship to Shri Gurdangaji, which is a Sikh holy scripture, which contains the verses and the prayers from all the gurus, some Sikhs and some saints from even other religions, showing the diversity and the inclusivity of Sikhism. I can go on and on about Sikh religion, but we don't have that much time. So I'm gonna go translate what Genghis prayer was. The prayer is called Adhars, which literally translates to humble plea or request. And it starts out with saying how massive and powerful the Almighty God is and how we are its humble servants. Then the prayer names all the ten gurus, Shri Gurdangaji or Guru Naam, and all the martyrs and saints of the Sikh religion, and ask for them to help us and answer our plea. Then the prayer once again addresses Gurdangaji or the Almighty God and thanks him or thanks them for all they have given us and ask them for their help. And the prayer closes with asking for the welfare and prosperity for all communities. Finally, at the end, the sacred word, "Bhulisonehaal," Sansayakal, is said, which translates, whoever may say this will be forever blessed and the true timeless God is forever eternal and it will always stay. And so in conclusion, Sikhism is a religion that believes in inequality for all and promotes truth, charity, and belief and standing up for what is right. This is why Sikhs follow the path of stage soldierhood, which means meditating upon God's name and helping others and also standing up for other people who cannot stand up for themselves. I'd like to thank the Greenwood Council for giving us this opportunity and wish everyone to have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bates.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Pendleton.
Here.
Williams.
Here. And we have a forum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of October the seventeenth. So I have a motion. Motion for Mr. Foster, second.
Second.
Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing and then roll call in the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Minister of improvement, vote of nine to zero. This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bart Geisler with Aviation Indiana. He has a presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Bart Geisler. I'm the executive director for Aviation Indiana for the trade association here in the state, representing all aspects of aviation, primarily focused on airports. At our recent annual conference, two weeks ago, we have an annual award, the Airport of the Year Award. I'm pleased to announce that at the conference, we have awarded Greenwood that honor. Many went through, looked at a variety of issues, economic developments, aviation, education, outreach, promotion, safety and security, and environmental projects. They will use these criteria and they'll come up with a report score on those. You know, so the, talking with the committee, you know, who made the decision, you know, they were impressed with the growth that the airport has experienced recently, you know, the community outreach, the open, you know, dates of the airport, the aesthetics. I think they recently completed a rapid expansion. I think probably the biggest one was their outreach, you know, to the education, getting the students excited about aviation. Aviation's unlike, or not like, excuse me, aviation's like all other industries or have a shortage of workers, trying to get people, you know, to look at the aviation as a career. And so with that, you know, those are the criteria, like I said, the committee was impressed. If you haven't done that, I'd recommend you send the application, you know, sixteen pages, you know, of what the airport has done, you know, in the last year. It's a great recap of their activities. I'll say one of the things, as such, we don't brag, but here's a good way for the airport to really recap and highlight, you know, all their great accomplishments. So with that, I have a plaque here for the mayor. And as part of the award, we should apply to be signed. One of the things, you know, we want to get back as the association, so we asked the airport, you know, to pick a charity, and they've chosen the Aeronautical Center of Technology. So we have a check department as well.
I just want to say, we have to say how proud I am of what's been going on at the airport with the airport expansion, the growth that we've had over the last few years. We're correcting the director out there, he's done an amazing job. With the EAA, as I say, it's grown continuously to make an amazing place for our young people to come out, to learn about aviation, to start getting their degrees in aviation, to earn their wings, as we might say. I'm very proud of them and thankful to them. And also, Counselor Gibson, I want to thank you especially for going way out of your way to always be out there to help the airport to continue to grow and expand. Our airport is one, obviously, the airport of the year. And very, very proud of that and everything we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will say that the airport's come a long way since I first got on the council. Very proud of it at the conference. Congratulations. All right, moving on, reports, Corporation Council.
You all should receive the items online monthly on the SharePoint, and if you have questions, please let me know.
In the name of the controller at this time? Any other committee or board reports?
Mr. President, we did, it seems like a long time ago now, I think we should have met back in October twenty-fourth. We did hear, I see a number of contingencies, and we approved a number of those for Olive Street, Primary Flat, for four-nine-one West Main Street, so that change. New business, we did work on and approve of non-compliance in order to vacate the carpet and mental suite, one of the seven East Main Street with the timeframe, which to get that accomplished, give her appeal, one-six-five South Anderson Avenue, which was approved. We have Olive Street, Primary Flat, we had also approved that, as well as the Main Street, so that change.
All right. Thank you. Any other committee or board reports? All right, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to speak to one of those items, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're on line, you may speak up. All right, seeing none, then moving on, ordinances, resolutions. There are none under notice of intent to consider, none under first reading, second reading, Resolution twenty-two twenty-four.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Greenwood and the consolidated city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana regarding several road improvements to West County Line Road and to Emerson Avenue, sponsored by Campbell, Foster, and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Foster, second. Second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the council? Any questions? Seeing none, then roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-four, second reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi. Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-four passes second reading, nine to zero. Resolution twenty-two twenty-five.
A resolution establishing holidays for employees of the city agreement for the year 2023, sponsored by Campbell, Foster, and Gibson.
Do you have a motion to move? Motion for Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Foster. Any discussion on the council? Hearing and then roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-five, second reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-five passes second reading, nine to zero. Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council waiving non-compliance of MRVIC Indy in three LLC regarding its failure to timely file its compliance with statement of benefit sponsored by Hopper.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Or Mr. Hopper?
Sure.
Or Mr. Foster, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven, second reading.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven passes second reading, nine to zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances, resolutions, ordinance number twenty-two thirty-seven.
And ordinance providing for an additional recreation from the American Rescue Plan for coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund to budget classification toward three-nine, one hundred thousand dollars for security grants to Central Nine Career Center, sponsored by Foster and Hill.
Right.
Good evening. This is very similar to what we did for the three public school districts. The mayor's office met with folks from Central Nine and came up with a plan here. So we're looking to do a one hundred thousand dollar grant for that toward security. Probably the cameras and other types of security equipment.
Right. Any questions?
Just one, under the same circumstances as the other three, where they would actually expend the...
Right. So they'll both buy whatever it is and then submit voices to us where they spend.
Right. Any other questions? There's a request for suspension of the rules through first reading, so I'll entertain a motion. So I have a rule, most of my Mr. Bates, who has a second, second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing and then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading of ordinance twenty-two thirty-seven.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-seven passes, suspending the rules through first reading, voted nine to zero. Yeah, but most of them on first reading.
Second.
Most of my Mr. Foster, Mr. Lexi, I'm sorry. Second, my Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Hearing and then roll call on ordinance twenty-two thirty-seven, first reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two thirty-seven passes first reading, a nine to zero. Thank you. This lady's... This lady's business is opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council concerning items not on tonight's agenda. So if you're here and would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for record, and talk for a long time so I can get my breath going. No, yeah, there is a five-minute timer.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak tonight. My name is Amanda Seifer, and I'm a resident here in Grand Bay, and my family and I live in the Lakeview addition. Last week, I sent, and you know, all of you should have received it, detailing the concerns that I have with some issues. I stand before the council today to talk about the gateways to Greenwood. Mark Price was recently quoted in an article I was reading, and he said, I quote, "We are talking about the gateway to Greenwood, and we want people to see something beautiful, something respectful, something that's encouraging and inviting to come in the city." Unfortunately, this isn't what I see. When you enter the city and approach any major intersection along County Line Road, there are panhandlers at every corner. This is nothing new, but I think it continues to get worse over time. You exit the interstate off sixty-five and exit ninety-nine, and you're greeted with a bunch of rundown, drug-infested hotels that are riddled with crime and a methadone clinic that is added to an already growing issue. These are just a few issues I see every day. However, the main reason for me being here tonight is because most recently, I've had to deal with a homeless person and a known drug addict living in my neighbor's property in a tent. A few months ago, the man started living out of their garage, and just a few weeks ago, he moved from the garage to a tent, a mere feet from the gate to my property. Over the last few years, this same man has come to my neighbors and lived in his garage for periods of time before moving on, but he always seems to come back. As of Friday, the tent thankfully is gone, but he's still around, and it's only a matter of time before he again will be living in the garage or a tent. Every time he comes back, the homeowners have allowed it, and the fact that the homeowners continue to allow it time and time again is baffling to me. And yes, we have tried to express our concerns with the homeowner, and they have ignored us. This particular person has already been trespassed from my property in the past when we found him standing at our front door in the middle of the night looking for cell service. I could stand here and tell you all the things we've had to deal with because of this person, but I only have five minutes. We live in a mostly quiet neighborhood. Most of my neighbors take great pride in the appearance of their homes inside and out. We live in a neighborhood mixed with young families and retired folks. Our street alone has a total of eight children, two in my household alone, who live within one or two houses of the property in question. As a parent, this is not what we envisioned our neighborhood dealing with. My kids can't play in their yard without me or my husband being out there because we never know what state of mind this person's gonna be. Every person I have talked to from the city and the police department have said the same thing. He has permission by the homeowner, and unless the cops see him doing drugs or something illegal, there's nothing we can do. The best advice the last police officer gave us was to be cautious when exiting our backyard and watch where we walk because we may come across dirty needles, or even worse. I'll let your imagination run with that. The mayor was quoted in the Daily Journal just this week in an article they ran touching on my particular issue, and he said, "There's no way to regulate, we can and cannot put up a tent on private property." The city of Greenwood has many ordinances for many things. Here's just a few and full disclosure, I have not sat in or at a gas station. If a camper is parking someone's personal property and they let someone live in it, they can get cited and fined by the city. If someone lives in someone's garage, they can get cited. But a homeowner can allow someone to pitch a tent in his backyard that bumps up to the parking lot at the busiest restaurant in our city, and it's perfectly fine and legal. Does it make sense to you? That's not beautiful. It's not respectful, and it's certainly not encouraging or inviting as you enter our city. I understand that most of you probably have never thought this would be an issue. More than likely, thought never crossed your mind, never crossed mine. But here we are, talking about it because it's affected me and my family's everyday life. In conclusion, I'd like to make it clear, I'm not here to target homeless community. I'm not here to demean them in any way, shape, or form. I am a person of compassion, and I am willing to work with the city to fix this issue in any way I can. That said, I get up every day, I go to work, I pay my taxes, I maintain my home, and I try to be an outstanding member of this community. What does it cost us taxpayers of the last few years and first responder runs and city issues because of the places mentioned earlier? Hotels, methadone clinic. Wouldn't that money be better spent being proactive and not reactive to the issues? This is only the beginning, and it's only gonna get worse. It'll eventually filter into other neighborhoods here in our city, maybe even yours. I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I hope to hear from the council to further discuss ways that we can find solutions to this issue. Thank you, Mrs. Gibson, for reaching out to me almost immediately after I sent my email, as well as Mr. Hill and Mr. Hopper. If you would like to reach out to me, Ms. Gibson has my contact information. And again, I'm more than willing to work with the city on this to come up with some type of solution. But I cannot, for the safety of my kids, allow this to continue.
Thank you. I can assure you, this is a concern for all of us.
I'm gonna tag along behind the Seifer, it's not the same situation. I pat down. I live in seventy Patterson Street, right next door to the Seifer. I've lived there for forty-five years, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to get to address the council. But first, I'd like to thank the city of Greenwood for just recently getting Patterson Street repaid, new curves. I mean, it's really greatly improved the neighborhood, and we very appreciate it. So thank you for that. I'm here to request that the council address an issue about the homeless situation we experienced with a person or persons living in a tent in the east of High Twenty-Six Patterson Street. The city of Indianapolis is just passing ordinances and vacating several of the homeless who camped in areas throughout Indianapolis. I can see this possibly adding to the situation here greatly if they move south of there. I've seen the city of Greenwood grow from sixteen thousand to sixty thousand. Some of it's fast, and I agree with, some of it don't. But I think we all know, with higher population comes higher crime or drug use. The Lakeview addition may not be the newest, the nicest neighborhood in the city, but it's far enough to work. I have worked long and hard to have the things that I have, and it disturbs me to have a homeless person or persons living in the east of my own properties, and which is a known, we're told that not drug users are... It's hard to say what a person's capable of doing. It's my understanding that because the person in question had the homeowner's permission, there's nothing that can be done. I find this very disturbing. With all the codes Greenwood currently has, for example, there's just a few, but no camper in front of the building line, grass over eight inches high. With all the codes Greenwood currently has, for example, and this is just a few, but no campers in front of the building line, grass over eight inches high. Trash cans at the curb over twenty-four hours, no heavy trash to curb prior to ten days. No trash cans stored in front of the building line, the list goes on and on. But a homeowner allowed a tent on their property, a person living in a tent on their property of all they like. I do have sympathy for some of the homeless and would hope the city could help with the relocation of some of these folks. I do realize the homeless situation is a problem. What I'd like to see is the city come up with an ordinance that would keep people living in tents on their front. Other than, the homelessness issue has got to be solved overnight. The whole city visual, being able to let a tent be addressed really quickly. And I thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right, moving on, any miscellaneous business from the council? All right. Anything from the corporation council?
I think he may have introduced himself, but I mean, I have with him this evening Joe Saylor, who's the latest addition to the legal department, the new assistant to the attorney. He is a former Johnson County deputy prosecutor, so.
Good, welcome. Thank you, thank you. Uh, anything from the controller?
Nothing from me.
Anything from the mayor? Thank you.